Emina Tontaiis, Nalihesletun Guam is back in session. We are back on second reading. Because of the bills that have been passed on file, I believe we are now back on Bill 116. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I do have an amendment to proffer. It should be in the folder. Let me just get a one moment recess. Okay, so the First Amendment I'd like to proffer is a basic amendment that was requested by the Mayor's Council. In their letter that I would like to also append to this, to the committee report, they requested that an amendment must be made to include municipal planning council members as designated individuals to be in consonance with Title V, Chapter 40, Section 40131, wherein a municipal planning council member can also issue a citation. And so the amendment is on line three, page three, it's to amend the bill to read, and the municipal planning council members. So who also have to be deputized by Guam, PA. Does everybody see that amendment?
On the amendment... Have you concluded your discussion on the amendment, Senator?
Uh, I think... If not, whatever I didn't finish, I could finish in closing, but yeah.
All right. So on the amendment, is there any other senator who would like to be recognized? Senator Sonagusen, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just have a question for the author and if you'll yield to it. It's, uh, why are we adding the municipal planning council when they're just there to advise the mayor? Why do they have to be part of the package? When it should be the mayor and the vice mayor, if there's one, to decide? That's what the council's there. I was a council member for Gigo, so I understand the role they play. To get them actually involved in what the mayor's supposed to do and the vice mayor? I'm not comfortable with that. Maybe they... She can explain it?
Would the author like to yield to the question?
Yeah, so in the letter by the mayors, that was one of the recommendations. So the idea behind this bill, I might, I think, if I can, perhaps, one of the reasons, it's not stated in the letter, but they wanted to perhaps expand the capacity within the mayor's office. But that's something I can bring back to them if that's a question that, you know, we just need some time to call them and find out the reason behind that.
Senator Sonagusen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. One of the reasons why I was asking that, if we read further on in the bill, it talks about the folks in the agencies. And I'd be just very reserved in even adding the municipal planning council, because otherwise any peace officer, well, why not the clerks? And then we can go down, we can go down every section here, and I'm just saying, a snippet, mayors, vice mayors, do your job. Get your councils to support whatever your agenda is for the village, because that's the role they play. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is there any senator who would like to be recognized on the amendment? Senator Nelson, on the amendment.
See, just, Ma'asi, Madam Speaker, I just have a question for the sponsor. There was a letter that was mentioned that the mayors wrote, supporting this amendment, but then later on in the conversation, it said it didn't specifically state the need to add the municipal planning council. So I'm just wondering, can, is there a copy of that in the committee report, or is this in the Google Drive for session?
Would the sponsor like to yield to the question?
This was sent to the clerks this morning, so maybe we can get a quick recess to see if it's uploaded.
It's loaded in the Google Drive for the session. Is there any other senator who would like to be recognized? We will come back to Senator Nelson unless there's... Is there any other senator who would like to be recognized on the amendment? If not, Senator Nelson, you have the floor. Any other senator on the amendment? If not, then sponsor, you may close on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So I just want to read the section of the law that the mayors had referenced in their request to include municipal planning council members. And so it states in Section 40131 that monies received from 5GCA Section 40115C, which is related to enforcement of litter, littering laws, or 5GCA Section 40128G, shall be deposited into the municipal litter and defacement fund of the municipality of the mayor, vice mayor, or municipal planning, municipal planning council member issuing the citation. So in law, it already recognizes them as those that can issue citations. So it's really basically to align the two sections of law, from the litter, the litter laws, to the municipal litter defacement fund. So it's really just to make things aligned with each other. So having thought, having considered that, I, you know, asked my, supported my colleagues to, I guess it's kind of cleaning up the law is what it is, because it's, they've already been authorized in current statute.
All right. Is there any objection to the amendment? We're going to vote on the amendment. Is there any objection? Objection? There's an objection. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. All those in favor of the amendment. Amendment fails. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
The Second Amendment I have... It pertains to, it's on page 10, line nine through 11, and it's the part of the bill that addresses the beautification fund, the Guam Beautification Fund. And so that's Section 7 of the bill. And so what this does, it basically expands the use of the fund. So currently in law, the funds can be used for landscaping, planting of grass, shrubs, trees, and flowers, for the improvement of public recreational areas or other public lands. And so, in line with what the bill is doing, to help with the picking up of cleanups of litter, the amendment reads, "for other improvements to public recreational areas or public lands, for cleanups, for anti-littering, for recycling educational outreach, and for assisting with recycling efforts." So it's really about reinforcing this idea that the money is meant to for cleanups and beautification. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is there anyone who would like to be recognized on the amendment? If not, then the sponsor may close on the amendment. Is there any objection to the amendment? Seeing no objection, amendment passes. Senator Perez, you still have the floor on the bill.
I do have other amendments to proffer, so maybe at this time, I can have others talk about the bill, and then I can close on the, with the amendments.
All right. So on the bill, are there any other senators who would like to be recognized on the bill? Senators Sonagusen, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, the author said she has additional amendments?
She's going to make them during closing. That's my understanding.
The amendments under closing?
Yes.
Then I'm not going to speak until I hear what the amendments are first. Thank you.
On the bill, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized on the bill? Amendments are made during closing all the time. Sponsors are added, all kinds of amendments. Is there anyone who would like to be recognized on the bill? To discuss the bill? On the bill? Senator Perez, you are welcome to close on the bill.
Just a moment recess. We're going to send it to clerks right now.
The amendment?
Yes, thank you.
One minute recess. ...
Regarding the pathways, right? So, the original law has two pathways that exist. One in which the mayors enforce and the other pathway. And in the one in which the mayors enforce, 50% goes to the mayors, their villages, and then the other 50% goes to the litter control revolving fund. And that's still the same. The second pathway involves, I guess, I want to bring more parity to Guam EPA because they really need the funds. And so, if you look at Section B, it ties them with Section B. So, the 70% would go to the litter control revolving fund, 5% to the judicial building fund for administrative purposes, and then the 25% to the Guam beautification fund is the same. And so, with that 70% that's going to the litter control revolving fund, 50% is going to go to the apprehending officer in the Section B of this amendment. So, that's the reasoning behind that, the changing, the shifting in the percentages. Because we wanted, I wanted to make sure that there was some funds going, a good portion of the funds going to Guam EPA. Because increasing it to 50%, so, the thing is, I wanted to make it equal. So, both pathways, no matter what, the mayors are going to get their 50%, whether they're the apprehending officer or, you know, they're following under the Section 40115. So, it's not going to change. That 50% is the same. And so, there's no conflict. And so, what that means, by losing that 5% originally that I had in the bill to Guam EPA for administrative costs, this would help to assist them with administrative costs on top of assisting with enforcement or any kind of training they have to do with citations. So, that's the purpose of the change in the percentages. The other part of this amendment is the Part B. So, I received testimony from Guam EPA, and they made a comment in their letter, which is also uploaded in the drive. And they made some suggestion about the, I guess, the administrative burden that it might have if they were to audit all the entities, all the law enforcement agencies. And it's still within their power to request anything from, the board can still, has the power to. So, they say in their letter, "The agency's board of directors are well within their authority to order the administrator to have an audit performed to ensure the funds are lawfully used in accordance with the proposed law, and the administrator may then make a request to the office of the public auditor for consideration." So, in light of that, this amendment in Part B took that into account. And so, what Part B now reads is that such agent, partner agencies and departments receiving monies from the litter control revolving fund under the section are subject to periodic audits of said funds at the direction of the board. So, that's, that's the reasoning behind this amendment.
All right. Let's first address the typo where it says 70% and then the numbers say 75. Is there any objection to changing the number to match the word so that the number will be 70%? Is there any objection?
Madam Speaker, no objection. If she can just go over the numbers and the percentage one more time. I'm writing it all down and I'm...
Sure. All right. But on that preliminary motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We are now, okay, there's been a request with the author yield to that request.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, so, just to go over the numbers, this amendment would make it so that any kind of fine or citation, so, other than the, through the mayor's council, right? So, let's say the police officer, sorry. So, basically, what it would do, 75% of a fine would go to the litter control revolving fund.
70.
I'm sorry, 70, excuse me, to get this correct. 70% goes to the litter control revolving fund, 5% goes to the judicial building fund, and then 25 goes to the Guam beautification fund to equal 100%. So, that's the reason.
Senator Sin Augustin.
Madam Speaker, I like the percentage, but I'm just trying to do the math. If you look at how A is written, it says 70%, right? And then it breaks it down to 5 and 25. Okay, that makes 100%. But then you go to B, then you take 50% out. Just trying to do the math, okay? If we can be, I'm in support of the bill, okay? I just need to make sure the percentage goes right so that it goes to the right place it needs to go. And nobody says, "I need 5," but I only, there's only 3. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
I'm sorry, you're right. On the amendment. On the amendment. On the amendment. Senator Taitegui, on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity. And with regards to this amendment, Proffered, I appreciate the mover of, you know, I was asking earlier during break, why the judicial building fund? You know, why put any funding into that one? And so, I guess I'm going to ask the author of the legislation, why do we have the judicial building fund? What does that have to do with, you know, littering?
Would the author yield to the question?
Yes, I do. So, this was at the recommendation by Guam PA that all parties are compensated for the manpower efforts. And so, what changed with this amendment is the, so, yeah, one of the reasons behind that was that they are involved in training for citations. Yeah, citation training, administrative stuff. So, I, that was the reason why they were included in the first place. And so, I hope that answers the question.
Senator Taitegui, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I've never heard of the judicial branch doing the training for citations. You know, usually hear that from GCC or, you know, from the police department, you know, providing any kind of training. So, I just, you know, I know, Madam Speaker, you're oversight chair of judicial branch, you know, if we can get some insight on whether, does the judicial branch, will they have a hand in this in training for littered citations? Because if that's not the case, Madam Speaker, you know, my assumption is that this money should go all directly through, to littering, to education efforts, you know, beautification task forces. And if training is needed in citations, which I know the mayors are all looking at finding ways to help themselves personally on giving citations and then even changing up the booklet in which they write the citations. Some of it is very taxing, and it should be simplified. And that was brought up by, I think, Mayor Gogui when we had a public hearing on another bill when it comes to citations. So, if I can, Madam Speaker, just find out for sure what exactly is judicial branch doing in doing any kind of training whatsoever? Because if they're not, then I would like to see this full amount go directly to the other entities that actually do the work, that actually provide the education programs on littering. So, if I could just take a short recess to find out through judicial if they do these trainings or if it's... I'd like an answer on, do the, does the judicial branch do these citation trainings?
Would you like the sponsor of the amendment to yield?
If she knows this answer for sure? Yes, absolutely, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Would you like to yield to the question?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I do, would like to concur for a recess. Request for recess.
Point of information.
Please state your point of information.
The information I wanted to bring up is that, number one, as a former police officer, we always went to the court, so they teach, they show us and they teach us how to write the citation, how to look at the law and how to be able to interpret. And that's how, my understanding is how judicial is helping. That's probably why they wanted the 5%. Thank you.
There's been a motion for recess. Is there any objection? No objection.
We're back in session. We're back on Bill 116. Senator Perez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So, the amendment I'd like to proffer is on line nine to ten on page five. It reads, "Public property except as designated for such use or upon property owned by another person without written permission of the owner, and a permit issued by the Guam Environmental Protection Agency." So, this amendment is in the section under prohibited activities, and so there was some discussion during the recess about, you know, strengthening this part, so that the permit... So, the reason why this was originally struck in the bill was to... The concept behind that was that any type of dumping has to be permitted, right, on a site? And so, that's why that was originally taken out. So, what this amendment does, it strengthens it, so that a permit is needed for any kind of, I guess, dumping on a private property. So, this, yeah, this is basically, it's supposed to close that loophole and also reinforce the idea that any kind of dumping has to be permitted. Thank you.
All right. On the amendment, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized on the amendment? Senator Sinoguerci, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of the amendment. It is to protect the private owners, private landowners. That's why that amendment was introduced, because the rest of the bill is all talking about government property. Now, this protects private owners, that if anybody thinks that, well, I just ask him if I can dump, no, 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 no. You gotta get a permit to be able to dump, and even the person that's dumping, if he's an authorized licensed hauler, he knows he's gotta get a permit to drop it at the private property. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the amendment? The SFPJSSA amendment? If not, then Senator Perez, you may close on the amendment. All right. Is there any objection to the amendment? Senator Torres, on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. If the proffer of the amendment was so yielded, I was part of that discussion during break about how this affects the dumping on private property, because originally by removing that section, it implies, just upon a simple read, that someone can dump on private property and that it is not defined as an unlawful act. So, with the discussion then became, well, it's really a matter of prohibiting someone from establishing an un... Not an unlicensed, but a non-permitted dumping site on their personal property, and that was the loophole they were trying to correct. My question, though, is, I understand that with the amendment, you're now strengthening the the act of creating a dumping site on personal property that is properly permitted. However, the question that I have of the proffer of the amendment was so yielded, is how does this affect dumping in general on private property? Whether by a person who hoards items themselves, or somebody who goes to somebody's property and without permission dumps things on it? How does this amendment affect that part? Because it is that private property owner that I'm considering. For example, if I were to have construction on my property and I unconscionably dump construction material or other things on the adjacent landowner without their permission, what is my recourse as a private property owner? Because this amendment, I believe, does not address that very basic premise of how do you make it an unlawful act for somebody to dump on somebody else's property without their permission, or for somebody on their own property to create their own private storage of items, for example, in large quantities?
Would the sponsor yield to the question?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Speaker. So, yeah, so that's what the litter, this is what the litter law is, is... This is the litter law, and to address the question about how, what recourse does someone have if someone should dump in one's property? So, they are violating the litter law, and in this case, if they're dumping, then they would get a higher penalty. So, the litter law does contemplate that already in regards to that. And in regards to hoarding, that definitely something that EPA would have to develop as far as their administrative, as part of their rules and regs, whether they can discern if someone is storing versus hoarding to a point that is considered a dump site. So, I would have to defer that question to Guam PA. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Torres, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm just going to look further at the two and try and reconcile it, because it's just not clear by this amendment whether my concern in a practical way is addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. On the amendment, is there anyone else who would like to be recognized on the amendment? If not, then the sponsor may close on the amendment?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I think this amendment, what this does, it closes an important loophole where in the original statute, it is lawful to dump, given the permission of a landowner. But what this amendment does, it states very clearly that that site must be permitted through Guam PA. And so, again, it's about strengthening, it's about addressing a chronic problem that we're having, which is illegal dumping, and it's providing more tools for Guam PA to enforce litter laws. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any objection to the amendment? Is there any objection to the amendment? Hearing and seeing no objection to the amendment, motion carries. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So, there's one more amendment, and it's on line twenty to twenty-two, page four. It reads, so I'm not sure if it's on the Google Drive yet. Let me just... Yes, it is, I think. So, it reads, "B, fifty percent of any fine collected or received pursuant to this article shall be transferred to the agencies and departments of apprehending officers assisting with the enforcement and implementation of this article." So, this would help clear the confusion, I think, earlier in regards to the percentages. So, the idea is that so seventy percent will go to the Litter Control Revolving Fund, five percent to the Judicial Building Fund, and twenty-five to the Guam Beautification Fund. And so, what this makes it clear is that the fifty percent of a fine is not on top of what, on top or an addition of what's been divvied out between those three entities, or three funds, and that this money is actually going to come from the Litter Control Revolving Fund. So, this is more of a clarification of what's written in the current bill.
On the amendment, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized? Senator Sinoguerci, you're recognized on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Simple clarification, if the author would yield to the question, the fifty percent is from, it's fifty percent of the seventy. That's all I want to know, and if it is, then it's thirty-five percent is there. Thank you.
Would the author yield to that question?
Yes, it should be clear. So, if the fine was a hundred dollars per se, so the apprehending officer, the agency of the apprehending officer would get fifty dollars. Okay? So, that's how this works. So, let's just give an example. So, a hundred percent is fine, right? So, seventy dollars is going to go towards the Litter Control Revolving Fund. Five dollars is going to go to the Judicial Building Fund, and then twenty-five dollars is going to go to the Guam Beautification Fund. So, what's collected within the Litter Control Revolving Fund, which is seventy dollars, fifty dollars is going to go to the apprehending, the agency of the apprehending officer. So, that's how the language here reflects that. So, regardless of what the fine is, fifty percent of that's going to go to the agency of the apprehending officer, which is captured in the Litter Control Revolving Fund. So, that's the clarifying part of this. Hope that answers the question. I hope that helps.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Sinoguerci, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just doing the simple math, if you got a hundred dollars, five dollars goes to judicial, twenty-five goes to the beautification, that leaves you seventy dollars left. The fifty percent equates to fifty dollars of the seventy? I just... But I'm okay. As long as the apprehending officer is going to get some money and the agency is going to be taken care of, I can live with that. At the end of the day, when they start doing the math and they figure it out, they're going to realize that it's fifty percent of the seventy is what it comes down to. Thank you.
On the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the amendment? On the amendment? If not, then the sponsor may close on the amendment?
Yeah, it's not, I'm sorry, if I can make a clarification, this amendment refers to the total fine that's collected. So, let's say it's a hundred dollars, fifty dollars of that's going to go to the agency of the apprehending officer. Right? So, that twenty-five dollars is going to go to the Guam Beautification Fund, and then five dollars of that hundred dollars is going to go to the Judicial Building Fund. So, that leaves twenty dollars left, and that stays with the Litter Control Revolving Fund, which is Guam PA. I can do a whiteboard. It's seventy, it was amended to seventy percent.
All right. So, is there any further?
No, yeah, so basically what this does, it's supposed to clarify how the money is then transferred from that Litter Control Revolving Fund. Thank you.
Thank you. We're not going to vote on this amendment? On the amendment, is there any objection? Is there any objection to the amendment? Seeing or hearing no objection, motion carries. Senator Perez, you have the floor to close on the bill.
One moment recess, please.
One minute recess.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for that recess. So this last amendment will duplicate, so it's under prohibited activities, and so one of the amendments that was passed had to do with requiring a permit should there be any kind of littering done on a private property. And so this amendment would duplicate that when it comes to dumping. So under prohibited activities, there are two parts, littering versus dumping. And so this amendment would ensure that if it's a dumping occurrence, it has to have a permit as well. And so this amendment reads on lines 16 to 17, page 5, "Such use or upon property owned by another person without written permission of the owner and a permit issued by Guam Environmental Protection Agency." So that's the addition. So it's really to reinforce the idea of a permit required. Thank you.
Thank you. On the amendment, is there anyone who'd like to speak on the amendment? On the amendment? If not, then Senator Perez, you may close on this amendment.
Yeah, one moment recess, please.
One minute recess.[606.16][606.16](noise) Senator Perez, on your, you may proceed with your closing.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So Bill 116 has taken quite, basically, it started with a roundtable, an illegal dumping roundtable in last term, and one of, basically, this is the, this is one of the recommendations that was made by Guam EPA, that they needed help in enforcement. And so what this bill does, it expands enforcement capability of Guam EPA, who has four people on their staff right now enforcing litter laws. And so as you can see, illegal dumping has become an epidemic on Guam, and it's so important that we beef up enforcement. And that's what this bill aims to do, it aims to increase enforcement capacity, expanding it to other law enforcement agencies. The other thing it does, it updates our litter laws by including the definition of illegal dumping. So back when this law was first created, illegal dumping was non-existent. And so it's very important to update, modernize our laws, and to address such a huge issue on Guam. It does this by increasing fines and penalties. It also requires service, and the purpose behind that is not only restitution, but to also account for restorative justice. So the idea is changing people's mindset. It's important to substitute improper behavior, illegal behavior, with what is the proper behavior. In this case, we want to promote recycling, anti-littering, you know, cleaner Guam. I think ultimately, if we can combine these efforts, as far as what is good, what we need to do, will be more sustainable than what we don't, what is wrong. I think that's critical, is developing that culture of, you know, beautifying our island and not dumping. So that's what I'm really proud about this bill, is it does that. It achieves multiple things in one bill, but by no means this is the only measure that's going to end illegal dumping. There are other bills that I've introduced that addresses that, and I hope to have it on the floor at some point. I think it's important to hear the concerns of our constituents, and that's what this bill does. It heard the concern and the suggestions by those at that roundtable, that are in part of the enforcement capability. And so I ask my colleagues for their support on this very important measure, to help address illegal dumping on our island. Situas Massey.
Situas Massey, Senator. On the motion to place Bill 116-36COR to the third reading file, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on Bill Number 162-36COR. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
My apologies, Madam Speaker, there is a substitute version that needs to be uploaded, so if I can have a one moment recess.
Senator Moylan, you had your hand up? Do you have a point of order?
No, Madam Speaker, I'll wait till after that decision, after the request from the Speaker.
I'll wait for the decision on this recess. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
All right. So we're going to take a one minute recess to upload a substitute bill? Senator Perez, is that correct? On that motion to pass on file this bill and put it behind the next bill, while the substitute version gets uploaded, is there any objection to that motion? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Moylan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So Bill 116 has taken quite, basically, it started with a roundtable, an illegal dumping roundtable in last term, and one of, basically, this is the, this is one of the recommendations that was made by Guam EPA, that they needed help in enforcement. And so what this bill does, it expands enforcement capability of Guam EPA, who has four people on their staff right now enforcing litter laws. And so as you can see, illegal dumping has become an epidemic on Guam, and it's so important that we beef up enforcement. And that's what this bill aims to do, it aims to increase enforcement capacity, expanding it to other law enforcement agencies. The other thing it does, it updates our litter laws by including the definition of illegal dumping. So back when this law was first created, illegal dumping was non-existent. And so it's very important to update, modernize our laws, and to address such a huge issue on Guam. It does this by increasing fines and penalties. It also requires service, and the purpose behind that is not only restitution, but to also account for restorative justice. So the idea is changing people's mindset. It's important to substitute improper behavior, illegal behavior, with what is the proper behavior. In this case, we want to promote recycling, anti-littering, you know, cleaner Guam. I think ultimately, if we can combine these efforts, as far as what is good, what we need to do, will be more sustainable than what we don't, what is wrong. I think that's critical, is developing that culture of, you know, beautifying our island and not dumping. So that's what I'm really proud about this bill, is it does that. It achieves multiple things in one bill, but by no means this is the only measure that's going to end illegal dumping. There are other bills that I've introduced that addresses that, and I hope to have it on the floor at some point. I think it's important to hear the concerns of our constituents, and that's what this bill does. It heard the concern and the suggestions by those at that roundtable, that are in part of the enforcement capability. And so I ask my colleagues for their support on this very important measure, to help address illegal dumping on our island. Situas Massey.
Situas Massey, Senator. On the motion to place Bill 116-36COR to the third reading file, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on Bill Number 162-36COR. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
My apologies, Madam Speaker, there is a substitute version that needs to be uploaded, so if I can have a one moment recess.
Senator Moylan, you had your hand up? Do you have a point of order?
No, Madam Speaker, I'll wait till after that decision, after the request from the Speaker.
I'll wait for the decision on this recess. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
All right, so we're going to take a one minute recess to upload a substitute bill? Senator Perez, is that correct? On that motion to pass on file this bill and put it behind the next bill, while the substitute version gets uploaded, is there any objection to that motion? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Moylan, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, notwithstanding House rules, I move to go back to motions.
There's a motion, notwithstanding the House rules, to go back to motions? Is there any objection on that motion? There's an objection. All those in favor of going back to motions, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Could you please raise your hands again? All those in favor of the motion to go back to motions, please raise your hand. Motion carries. We're back in motions. On motions, Senator Moylan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the body to reconsider the actions of the body on Bill number 106-36COR.
This is a motion to reconsider the actions of the body. If this motion passes, we will then vote on whether Bill 106 will be placed on the session agenda. So this is a motion to allow the body to reconsider the actions on Bill 106. All those in favor of, is there any objection to reconsidering the actions of the body on Bill 106? There's an objection. So all those in favor of reconsidering the actions of the body on Bill 106, please raise Motion carries. Senator Moylan, you are recognized on Bill 106. Okay, we're just going to call the motion, I guess so. There's been a motion to place that bill on the agenda. Is there any objection to that motion to placing the bill on the agenda? There is an objection. All those in favor, notwithstanding the rules of placing the bill 106 on the session agenda. All those in favor of placing Bill 106 on the agenda, notwithstanding the rules, please raise your hand. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Are there any other motions? We are still on motions. Are there any other motions? If not, then we will resume with second reading. We are now, Bill 165-36COR. Senator Shelton, you could preside.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On Bill number 165-36COR, I would like to move to place this bill into the third reading file, and I would like to discuss that motion.
Please proceed.
Bill number 165-36COR, sponsored by myself, Therese Terlahi, and Senator Sabina F. Perez. It is an act to amend Section 10115A2 of Chapter 10, Title 22, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, relative to removing the cap on civil penalty for violations of the Guam Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Regulations. Bill 165-36COR was introduced to remove language in Guam EPA's current rules and regulations that sets a cap on civil penalties. It literally strikes out the phrase, quote, "except that the minimum amount of any civil penalty under this section shall not exceed $125,000," unquote. The Marble Cave incident is what brought the cap on civil penalties to my attention. Back in July, the public was notified of environmental damage to Marble Cave, one of our island's freshwater sites. The cave was enjoyed by our community and had survived storms, typhoons, and earthquakes. But because of carelessness and negligence, it had been devastated. That destruction is unacceptable. It's disrespectful to our land, our resources, and our people. And I think we can all agree that the violators need to be held responsible for their actions. I'm going to read one of the paragraphs from Guam EPA's notice of violation to the violating company, and it says, quote, "G EPA is proposing a total civil penalty of $10,000 per violation, per day. The time period over which G EPA is assessing the proposed $10,000 penalty is for a period of 368 days, from July 202022 to July 23, 2021. For five total violations over a period of 368 days, this amounts to a total of $18,400,000. However, the total penalty that may be assessed by G EPA is limited by 22 GAR, Section 10114B, to $125,000. Therefore, the total penalty amount is $125,000." So I'm trying to remove that end quote, Madam Speaker. So I'm trying by this bill to remove that cap on the penalty to give the discretion to Guam EPA to do what it thinks it should do in these types of situations, including to penalize for every single day that they claim there was a violation. I want to point out that this amendment would continue to give Guam EPA Administrator the discretion in many areas, including the determination of the amount of any penalty assessed, to take into account the nature, the circumstances, the extent, and the gravity of the violation with respect to the violator, the ability to pay any prior history, sorry, the ability to pay any prior history of violations, the degree of culpability, economic benefit or savings resulting from the violation, and any such other matters as justice may require. The current law and regulations also retain with the administrator the discretion to settle, modify, or release, with or without conditions, any administrative penalty which may be imposed under this section. I think allowing the administrators' continued discretion will protect circumstances where discretion is required or where circumstances may be less compelling. One of my colleagues from Baragota Heights at the public hearing for this bill, in fact, the co-sponsor of this bill, stated at that time, quote, "Having a cap on penalties privileges the worst offenders," unquote. And I agree wholeheartedly with that assessment. I believe that removing the cap on the penalty will help to serve the purpose of deterring violators, of ensuring that companies will comply with EPA regulations and help Guam EPA in its enforcement mission. I'd like to ask my colleagues to please assist me in this effort. Situas Massey, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Speaker Terlahi. Anyone on Bill 165-36? Senator Sinagastian, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The only question I have is that maybe legal can answer this. Number one, GAR, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, are created by the agency to give an interpretation of a law that exists. And if there's any shortcoming in interpreting that law, then that's when they create the GAR. My concern, I'm in support of lifting the cap, there's no doubt, because some of the damages that have happened on Guam, and I'm from the north, so I'm familiar with the Marble Cave, okay? But my concern is that if it could be, wouldn't it be better if we just changed the law instead of the GAR? Because when they look at GAR, they always have to look at what GAR is trying to interpret the shortcomings of the law, or the, what they believe the intent of the law was. And I'm only concerned, and the reason why is that because a few years back, I've had former Senator Klitsky testify on a hearing when we were attempting to change the GAR. And he said, "If you change the code, it fixes the GAR. GAR does not fix the law, but the law fixes the GAR." So I just wanted to, I'm in support of the intent, lift the cap. But I just wanted to make sure that we're not saying something that, we're passing a bill saying, "The GAR has changed." But when they go to battle in court, they may say, "Well, Guam Code says this." And I just want to make sure we're protected and we make sure that the proper and the appropriate fines are imposed on the violators. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. So Speaker, will you yield to the question?
Sure, Madam Speaker. In this situation, there, the only, the penalties are provided in the GAR. They are not necessarily provided in the law. And so we have to change the GAR if we are going to remove this cap. There has been a suggestion by EPA that they would also like, through another bill, for all of their penalties, all of them in their, currently in their regulation, rules and regulations, to be also put into statute specifically, as opposed to just the authority to create penalties. So there is another bill that is being worked on to put those, in addition, or to put those penalties into statute as well. So currently, these penalties all exist in the GAR, and that is why we have to amend the GAR right now. Situas Massey.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Then, Madam Speaker, if GAR will meet that requirement, there's just hope when they go to court, there's no debate, GAR versus law. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Sinagastian. On the Bill 165-36, Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So yeah, I just want to make another point of information. So in the, the concomitant bill that was associated with the rules and regs, it basically says $1,000 for each day of violation shall, yeah, so basically, it doesn't require, it doesn't say anything about capping. It only comes in the GAR. So I think it's really a fitting that by changing this portion, it is aligning with what's authorized in, in law. So I think removing this cap is fitting. But I think, other than that, you know, I rise in full support of this bill. I think, I appreciate the author for working so quickly to respond to the outrage by our community, finding that a company that was very negligent, they, they put together the plans, the plans were beautiful, but they never, they did not implement it. And when we had this huge rainstorm, it created such a disaster, environmental disaster. And it was so disheartening to see that we couldn't, you know, penalize them to the extent of the damage. And so what this bill does, it, you know, addresses that issue. And of course, it leaves it up to the administrator to have some sort of discernment about how to, to enforce. But I think this is an important change in our laws. You know, we want to, you know, we, we see our environment is very precious, and our laws need to reflect that. And we need to hold those accountable to the extent that they, the damage that they create. I think in general, it's better to prevent the damage, but we should, we should also have the power to enforce. Our island is small, it's very precious, and we need to protect it. And this bill is one step towards that. Situas Massey.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Blaz, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I do rise in support of the intent of the legislation. I just have a question that I'm just hoping the author would yield to. And basically, the question is, generally, in situations such as what we're dealing with, with the Guam Administrative Rules, the GAR, generally, those rules are basically set, set in place through the AAA process. And I'm sure that it was through the AAA process that the figures for the fines that could be imposed, whether it be daily or cumulatively, were part of the discussion. Just for the sake of making sure we cross our Ts and dot our Is, but I guess the question is, does the author know, or do you have any history as to how the $125,000 cap, because it doesn't seem to be an arbitrary figure, how that came to be? And I'd like to be able to ask this question for the sake of, again, crossing our Ts and dotting our Is, that we're not stepping on the toes of anybody.
Thank you, Senator Blaz. Speaker, do you yield to the question?
I'll yield to the question, simply to say that at the, the hearing, there was no testimony as to the background of that $125,000. I was expecting them to give an explanation as to why it was relevant, but they didn't. They, they were all in support of just removing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Senator Blaz?
I don't want to belabor the issue and stuff, it's just that it was a point of concern that, for me, to raise about how that figure came to be. Okay, so in the meantime, I think I have enough time to be able to do the research on my own. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Blaz. On the bill. Senator Perez, you have a point of information?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker. So, yeah, I did pose that question to Guam EPA, and the response that I got at the time was, US EPA does, has the same practice of capping fines. But there wasn't a definitive answer of how they got to $125,000. So that is something that I can definitely follow up on. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez. On the bill. Senator Rogel, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this measure, and I'd also like to ask to be a co-sponsor, if the authors of the measure would allow me to. I rise in full support of this. I think the recent environmental disaster down at the Marble Cave, Saseon Valley area is a prime example of why this is necessary. Currently, with the cap on the amount that Guam EPA can fine these companies, the amount that they were able to fine this company for this damage is like, not even a slap on the wrist, it's a telic of the ear. It's even less than a telic of the ear. We're talking about a multinational, multi-trillion-dollar corporation known as KEPCO, which is the largest power producer out of South Korea, a huge corporation. A fine, the current fines that we're able to give them now does nothing, nothing to make them not want to commit these violations. So we definitely need to lift this cap, because this prime example, the unfortunate example, has shown us why it's necessary. So without going on too much longer, I just want to say I fully support this measure, and I hope that this will send a signal and a message to all companies to make sure they abide by the environmental laws and regulations of Guam. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Situas Massey. Senator Rogel, on the bill. Bill 165-36, anyone wishing to speak? Speaker, Senator Tidoglu, you are recognized.
Situas Massey, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak in favor of this legislation. You know, Madam Speaker, I mean, that most people, by the time they're, especially locals on Guam, by the time they reach the age of about 18, 19, everybody had the opportunity to actually visit Marble Cave, you know, to see how beautiful it is, see pictures that were there, you know. Many of my friends have all been there. But Madam Speaker, I had not had the opportunity to visit Marble Cave until recently, after the disaster that had happened. I was so excited, because there were so many of my friends who had gone and talked so, you know, explicit about how beautiful it is and the water, how you can see right through to the bottom. So as I was trekking down, you know, the hill to the, to the cave, and, and to see that there was no water, there was no blue, there was all just soot and mud. So I get a little bit closer to see, and I, and I turn to the other So I get a little bit closer to see, and I, and I turned to the other people that were around me, who've obviously been there before, and asked them, where, where's the water? It's literally gone. It was all mud, there was no water whatsoever. And they said, it's all underneath all that soot and mud. I just wish, Madam Speaker, I was there sooner. I wish I had just seen it when it was pristine and beautiful, like all my friends had before. And what's even more disheartening is the fact that if they don't clean this up, the next generation would not have the opportunity to see how beautiful this was. This was just an iconic and very popular location for our people, and now where else are they going to go to find something so beautiful? We could have, could have, should have, would have, kept coming into my head, what else could we have done? Could we mandate also in legislation to provide EPA to actually go down there periodically to visit sites that have been approved, especially when you're in the areas that have such pristine We could have done that. And maybe, I'm hoping that we can put legislation to require EPA to go down there on a more regular basis, and not down there, but in areas where there is construction or build, you know, plans to build in a location. Now we have the opportunity now to stop any of that moving forward, or at least deter these companies coming in, building projects, or anything under the sky that would disrupt our natural habitat. We have the option today to do that, at least deter them from doing it. And I hope that this doesn't stop us from creating more legislation that would actually protect our environment, even more so, and allow the next generation to see the beautiful parts of our island. And I hope one day, whatever types of mitigation they do, that I will go back to Marble Cave and see it, in its, in its light and beauty that all my friends told me about. But it's no longer there. And until then, Madam Speaker, I, I stand in full support and have asked Speaker to be a co-sponsor of this legislation as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Titeguy. Senator Torres, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I want to bring up another point of, a point of view that I think needs to be part of this discussion. I'm not disputing the outrage that our island has experienced and felt as a result of the destruction of Marble Cave. But with regard to Bill 165-36, I want to bring up the point of view that this section of Guam law, Title 22 Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations relative to Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Regulations, those regulations apply to everybody. They apply to everybody when there is construction. It could be the little guy that just wants to build a single-family home for, for his, his family. It could be somebody starting up a business. It could be development. It could be any range from a very basic project to something that is a multimillion-dollar project that involves huge investors with what seems to us bottomless capital. But I'm bringing up the point of view from the little guy. And certainly, a $10,000 per day per violation penalty is huge. It's huge for most of us. And so I want to just caution us that while we're fixated on, on what we perceive as a, an atrocity against a natural asset of Guam, Marble Cave, the effect of legislation when it removes caps on penalties for soil erosion and sediment control regulations, that, that effect is everybody. And so while we want to, to penalize and, and get what we feel is a just due for a violation that is so egregious to our water system on Guam, while that's not disputable, what we always have to be mindful of, I believe, is where, where you become a breaker of all things, as opposed to setting penalties where penalties are due, but enabling people, construction projects, to proceed, enabling people who violate to pay up and make whole, if that is another section of the, the remedy that is ultimately brought, say, this is adjudicated, for example, what is the remedy that is going to be taken down on them? So I, I, I do have reservations about removing caps. I believe that in our system, we have consistently had ranges up to not to exceed. And oftentimes, when there's penalties, it's a culmination of different types of, of remedies sought. And so the, the ability to go after somebody, to adjudicate somebody, and, and really hold somebody responsible, I believe is there within our judicial system. But what I, I'm, I'm a little concerned about is where this type of legislation affects even the little guy, and makes it impossible, or very, very difficult for anybody to proceed, to proceed with a project. In other words, we can't make it to where it is, it is not a, a disincentive, but it becomes a death nail to most projects. And I, I'm just advocating for that little guy. If, if I were in a situation, not me personally, but hypothetically, if, if I as a person were in a situation where I were building a home, and there was some sort of violation by my contractor, or, or the, the remedies that they put in place, that the things that they put in place to help control sediment, control sediment runoff, for example, didn't hold, and there was a breach, you know, what, what would, what would be too much of a penalty in those breaches where it is maybe partially their fault, partially not their fault? You know, do we, do we make it so that we, we bankrupt everybody and break everybody? Or do we make it so that the system, within reason, can punish as punishable as is reasonably punished, but, but, you know, keep it within that degree of reason? So I, I would much rather see that we raise caps, raise a threshold, as opposed to having everything open-ended. Because once you have open-ended, no caps, there is no control. And I think with any project where a law applies to everybody, from that one person that maybe wants to build a home for $40,000, $50,000, which maybe is unreasonable, it's just a little thing, but say, say the average home on Guam is $100,000. How do we allow for them to realize something? Punish where punishes, where, you know, punish as is reasonable, but not punish to the point where it's, it's really a death nail, and unable, and person is unable to rise above that. So that would be my, my concern, and that's really my reservation about these types of measures. There should always be a cap to everything, because nothing is unlimited after all.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Anyone on the main bill, 165-36. Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I have to tell you, there was a time many years ago, I would have, this is all, it would have all been music to my ears, to see so many members of the legislature speaking in favor of ensuring environmental compliance in our community. It's nice to know that things are changing in that direction, because this has not always been the case. But I do want to comment on this bill, not so much in case of wanting to remove the cap, but the view that this outrage has happened, and perhaps this legislation, again, I don't know if that's the direct connection between the incident at Marble Cave and the desire to increase the fines and penalties that can be issued against violators in our community. As a government, we have a responsibility also. And while we are granting, if this bill does pass, Guam EPA, the ability to fine larger amounts to violators, the government of Guam, and Guam EPA in particular, also has a responsibility to execute its job. And that job is to regulate these laws that have been put in place, and the tremendous, tremendous authorities that have been granted to Guam EPA as a regulatory agency. Perhaps lately, they haven't used it as effectively as they have the capability of doing. But in this particular case, I can speak from a point of experience, having served for almost four years at Guam EPA at a time during the second-largest collective development in Guam's history after World War II, when we had substantial construction happening simultaneously on the island with no more personnel than 30 years ago that Guam EPA has today. And colleagues, while we want to increase the fines, we need to be mindful, if we're going to talk about the Marble Cave situation, that project got so far along in construction without proper regulatory enforcement. And as Senator Tello had mentioned, yes, you know, Speaker Turloki, myself, and Senator Sabina had the opportunity to go look at that project and see the amount of damage and erosion that happened. But I also noticed the fact that that project is almost substantially completed with no proper erosion control measures put in place. Most of those solar panels have been constructed for some time and are sitting there with no active engagement as to whether or not they were going to hydro-seed that project, or how were they going to address the erosion of the substantially large-sized area that they cleared. Most of those erosion control measures are supposed to be put in place before that construction even commences. And Guam EPA has come out publicly and said, oh, well, ponding basins weren't constructed, these erosion control measures weren't put in place, and therefore, we're going to find this company. All of a sudden, we have all these other entities in Governor Guam permitting construction that are all of a sudden coming out, and, oh, we're going to issue them a $25 million fine. The real objective is to prevent these situations from happening in the first place. And in this particular case, we're wanting to give Guam EPA more authority. Again, I, I could, you know, leave it up to the authors, the reason and the timing of this legislation, or it might be simply related to wanting to strengthen that process so that violators, you know, don't take this issue lightly. But when your key government agency that's supposed to be looking out and addressing these issues, the government agency that permits these projects is not out there doing proper enforcement and proper inspection, and even talking about how they have to build up their enforcement division, there's something wrong. There's something wrong when the main mission of your agency is not being fulfilled. For that project to have gotten that far along in construction without verification that those erosion control measures were put in place is a failure of Guam EPA with regards to this specific project. So while some people are standing on their soapboxes wanting to go after this company, and I'm not justifying the actions of this company, they were supposed to have addressed this with regards to their construction. But when the government entity that's supposed to be regulating these activities and verifying that these protective measures are being put, are being put in place, had this happened, we would not have gotten to the level of damage. Because the desire is to prevent the damage from happening in the first place, because in many circumstances, you cannot repair things back to where they were. You simply cannot. And of course, the main agenda is to want to ensure compliance. But let's not kid ourselves about this issue. This is a failure of a regulatory agency that's in charge of protecting environmental interests in this community, not doing its main job. And they can come up with all the excuses, I don't have enough personnel, I don't know what government agency has enough personnel. For those of you colleagues who have actually run department and agencies, we never had that luxury. But what you do is you maximize your resources where you need them, and you adjust as you need them. But when the key agencies are not going out and inspecting, if the, if the whole objective is just to, you know, punish and fine people, then I guess this will resolve it and make the problem go away. But when your key agency is not doing their job, when they're continuing to permit these type of projects, because you tell me in this public community, outside of the base construction, what project is happening of this magnitude of construction on Guam right now? Where is it happening? I don't see it. So if they want to fine 300-something days of the year, then where was Guam EPA for 300-plus days of this year, past year, when this project was in construction? I think Guam EPA needs to sharpen the teeth, because their teeth have gotten pretty dull. If all we're going to do is fine, that's not going to resolve the issue. And we have to have some comfort, Madam Speaker, that the agency that we entrust with this responsibility is out there protecting our interests. Because if they can let something this big fall through the cracks, what else is falling through the cracks? And that was just, that, there's nothing to justify what happened out there, it's unacceptable. But I cannot even begin to get on this floor and say, oh, this is the reason why we need to do it, because of this horrendous thing that happened. These type of things, in most cases, unless there's a catastrophic circumstance, are avoidable. And I think that's something, I hope the Oversight Chair at the appropriate time addresses the issue, because I think those things need to be brought to light, when public officials are not performing their duties. Because right now, I hear a lot of people wanting to, oh, yeah, we gotta, we gotta take the, and I have no problem whatsoever. It's very much been my track record to hold people responsible, and certainly during my time at EPA, to hold violators accountable for their actions. But I think we need to look where the responsibility of the government also begin, and where do those responsibilities end. But in this particular case, while we're looking at granting Guam EPA more authority to increase their fines, we also need to ensure they're doing their job. And in this particular case with Marble Cave, I don't see the evidence of that. And that is something we also need to be concerned with as well. With that, Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Thank you, Senator Brown. On Bill 165-36, Senator Duaneus, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, and certainly understand the intent of Bill 165. I guess I would start by asking the author to yield to a question, before I kind of deliberate myself on my future thoughts on this bill. Is, is it the intention, then, as I see the strike through for the bill, to simply be open-ended on fines?
Speaker, do you yield to the question?
The fines are set by other provisions of the code to say up to, I think, $10,000 per day, but this removes the cap of $125,000 total. So the total could be larger than $125,000 is what I expect will happen, can happen if this bill's passed.
So just a follow-up, then that would mean, whatever the other, the fines, whatever the schedule is or the like, it could just be whatever's decided, basically, there's just no cap? You know, Madam Speaker, I listened, and I, and I think I concur with some of the concerns that have been brought up by the previous speaker, and as well as the previous speaker to that speaker. I wonder sometimes, because I also heard one of our colleagues speak to the fact that, you know, should we put in law, or is there enough teeth or oversight capability within EPA to monitor projects and to make regular or whatever visits, you know, needed to evaluate the progress, or lack thereof, in terms of compliance? In this particular incident- In this particular incident, you know, if what we're doing is, of course, drawing the attention to lifting the cap, and this particular complete atrocity, really, that happened down at Marbo Cave, and the contiguous properties, it really seemed like, if you see a lot of the reporting, I mean, it was really, really an egregious situation whereby mitigation that was required was clearly not done. And obviously, in that particular location, with regard to topography, with regard to everything else going on, and even just the nature of this project, Madam Speaker, where you really have a huge land clearing to put down panels that basically rendered the surface for thousands of square meters, open soil, I mean, it just seemed like it would be obvious that ponding basins and the like, and, you know, we've seen this even with some of the buildup, to be completely honest with you, where it's so important that those mitigation efforts are done, that are part of the design. So I wonder, you know, if that's the case, I mean, I wonder if the situation is, I mean, when we've got these larger projects, we have to have the regular inspections, we have to use the tool in the toolbox, Madam Speaker, that's already there. You know how much it would cost a company like this on a daily basis with regard to a stop order? A stop order on a project of that magnitude, with the earth-moving equipment that we know, or at least I know, in terms of friends who do that for a living, thousands and thousands of dollars a day for that equipment to be on-site? For the technical nature in terms of connectivity and other things that it would take on a project like this for that to stop? I mean, a multi-multi-million, and the hundreds of millions of dollars project, stop order, is, that's a fine in and of itself. So I'm going to continue to listen to the debate, because what I want to make sure of is that when we go to something open-ended, you know, does that become the tool now? You know, does that become the preferred tool in the toolbox, if you will? Because, you know, it really, it's incumbent upon us, from time to time, to really evaluate, what is the balance? You know, what have we done to say, look, you know, I mean, we're going to have discussions, probably in the near future, about other development that's coming up. I'm sure investment's going to continue to be robust on Guam when the economy starts to turn around, but we've got to really ask ourselves, I mean, we want enforcement, we want, when a plan goes through the process, and is approved by Public Works, and all of the regulatory agencies have signed off, that the mitigation is going to be adequate, that it's sustainable, that if the problem really wasn't following the plan, we, you know, we might all have something to do with that. So I'm going to continue to listen, and see where the discussion goes on this. But I do want to be a little cautious that our reaction to a situation that existed is comprehensive, and that takes into consideration that we don't swing that pendulum all the way over there to where, you know, that's, you know, we found the hammer, it's the only tool we need. I'm not discrediting the fact that, you know, that that's what would happen, or, you know, those that are responsible for routine inspections, and surprise inspections, and whatever, you know, tools currently exist would be thrown out. But we also want to make sure that things aren't arbitrary. Do we have favorites? I don't know. You know, and that's what was discussed as well earlier on the floor, I mean, is it big guys, is it little guys, is it, you know, enforcement? So, I think we, with the current laws we have in place, with the current mandate in terms of regulatory responsibility, you know, that in and of itself has its own obligation as well. We know that this particular, if we're really going to center around this particular atrocity, really, we know that recently, this has also come up at the level of, you know, the Contractor's Licensing Board. We know that there, I believe, has been, you know, potential talks of revocation, or other implements there as well, as well as fines there. So, I'm going to continue to consider this and weigh that. I would just hope that in our zeal, certainly to make sure that our laws, you know, have the multitude of tools, the complete swinging of the pendulum, I have to consider as we continue to discuss this bill. Sidus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Sidus Massey, Senator Duennius. On Bill 165-36, Senator Ada, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The author would yield to a question, and the question is, is this bill intended to be prospective to where it passes and assigns into law that that cap will start from then?
Speaker Turlohi, do you yield?
It's my understanding that's the only type of law that we can pass, so yes, this is intended to be prospective.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Speaker, I just don't want the agency to have any different interpretation that, because the cap has been removed now, that they go back five, six months, or whatever it may be, to instill their penalties, now that there is no cap. So with that said, I just thank the author for the clarification.
Thank you. On the bill. Speaker Turlohi, you may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I'd like to thank all my colleagues who have raised their concerns on this bill, and of course, on the actions that have happened on Guam, and the need for additional protections for our environment. I want to clarify some of the issues that were raised. First of all, this bill does not negate the Guam EPA's enforcement responsibilities, or the Department of Public Works enforcement responsibilities, or GPA, the contractor in the Marbo Cave incidents, or the agency involved in that contract, from their enforcement responsibilities. This bill is not intended to resolve the Marbo Cave incident. I raised the Marbo Cave incident because that's what brought this to our attention. This bill does not propose to resolve the litigation in regards to the Marbo Cave incident, or any litigation that might be pending at this time, which in light of the circumstances and the parties involved, the more we learned, including property owners who have also filed suit, and the high stakes that are involved in that Marbo Cave incident, due to the contract, due to compliance that GPA has to be in conformance with, all types of things have come into that incident that we cannot resolve by this single bill, and I'm not even attempting to resolve those by this single bill. And all of those are probably, at this point, beyond our control. But I expect that litigation to be fully expended, and they will, I expect, challenge everything possible, every rule, every statute, every notice of violation order, every stop order, everything. And so, I am not proposing at all, and I don't want anyone to think that this bill is meant to resolve the Marbo Cave incident, it doesn't resolve it. It fixes this one regulation, so that going forward, EPA has one additional tool in its tool belt. And I think we need to give them as many tools as possible, especially when they're dealing with multimillion-dollar agencies as the violators. This bill does not mandate that the same penalty is going to be placed on the single resident of Guam, someone who made one mistake. In fact, that's why I read all of the discretion that the administrator of EPA is going to continue to have despite raising the cap. The administrator of EPA is going to continue to have, according to the other rules that we are not impacting at all by this bill, he will continue to have the discretion of the fine amount, because the rules say up to $10,000 per violation, for this certain type of violation. And there's fines for different types of violations, but for this certain one, up to $10,000, up to, they have discretion. Administrator also has discretion to determine the amount of any penalty, to take into account the nature, circumstances, extent, and gravity of the violation, or the violations, and to consider the violator, whether they're the little guy, or the multimillion-dollar The administrator is supposed to consider their ability to pay any prior history of such violations, the degree of culpability, the economic benefit or savings resulting from the violation, and such other matters as justice may require. And that's exactly what we want. We want a statute that is flexible enough, just like we want judges that are flexible enough to consider the circumstances before them, on a case-by-case basis. And that's what this bill will do. It removes the cap, it doesn't mandate that the administrator's going to exceed $125,000 in every case, it just removes that, because when there is a case where justice requires that a penalty of in excess of $125,000 be mandated, then that should happen. And otherwise, we've seen this in our historic preservation laws and other types of laws, it is so much more affordable for companies and people with a lot of money to just pay the fines, to do it, violate the laws, and pay the fines. And so I'm trying to prevent that by allowing the administrator an additional tool. And I'm not trying to take away anybody's blame, or put any blame on anybody, and if we want to help these agencies, instead of just bashing them, then we should give them tools, and we should give them the fines when we collect them, and allow them to do, to continue, to add on to whatever they have had to do in the past. I would like to thank those departments, including the Guam EPA, who came to, and the agencies, and the community members who came to testify at the public hearing on this bill, and who have supported this bill through social media and other. And really, you know, let's face it, there's an outrage in our community over one incident, but it's one example of other incidences that have occurred, and we just, we need to get on top of these, fix our laws, fix our rules, fix our agencies, and we need to all work together in order to do that successfully. I'd like to thank my cosponsor, Senator Sabina Perez, for her support in this, and I'd like to promise at the public hearing that I would do this. So I had submitted a floor amendment to the clerk, I think they just recently loaded it up, but it's been submitted, it's to add cosponsors, Senator Rigel, Senator Brown, Senator Titwe, and I want to thank them for attending the hearing on this bill. And I'd like to thank the Committee on the Environment for holding the hearing on this bill and reporting it out. And so I would like to urge my colleagues to please, again, to, let's join together, and let's just fix one part of these rules that we can, and prevent any impediment going forward that the cap might be creating. And let's continue to work together, to continue to look at all of our environmental laws, our historic preservation laws, and all our regulatory agencies, and see all the ways that we can assist them. Sidus Massey, Madam Speaker, I'd like to move to place the Bill 165-36 on the floor, I mean, into the third reading file.
We'll take your first motion to add cosponsors. Are there any objections? Motion passes. And on your motion to place into the third reading file for voting, any objections? Motion passes. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion that we recess until 10:00 a.m. Monday morning. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Nelson. There is a motion to recess until 10:00 a.m. Monday. Are there any objections? We are in recess until 10:00 a.m. Monday morning.